Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for October 21st, 2024. I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees and matters made confidential under federal law the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, I just first want to apologize for coming out so late, we just had a few things to go over, we don't usually do that, I apologize. So, good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for October 21st, 2024. May please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the mother-in-law of Victoria Lukowski and the father-in-law of Elizabeth Durenzo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, for God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Again, thank you for being patient with us, we're going to start with public comment, and we have one person signed up, so means I have to read my little thing, hang on. Please know this is not directed at you, it is something we read every time, so. Although the state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community and members about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. Speakers are asked to sign up for the appropriate sign-up sheet, and if your name is not legible or reachable, you will not be called upon. Our policy, 1230, public participation at board meetings, clearly states that we do not allow discussion involving or using the name or situation of individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up their right to continue to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or disruptions from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to abide by the three-minute speaking period, the microphone will be turned off. Thank you, and again, not directed at anybody. So, our first person who signed up was Daphne DeMess.
Good evening, I'm Daphne DeMess, I am a parent of the district.
Excuse me, can you move the microphone down so we can hear you? Thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening, I'm Daphne DeMess, a parent in the district. I just wanted to touch upon the science of reading that is going to be presented tonight. It has come to my attention over the past couple of years that we are not picking up on some of the struggles that of reading that children are experiencing. And I think what you'll hear tonight is great effort at making some of those changes with action plans, and those are also in response to the New York State requirements that have changed in learning how to read, and providing that for children of New York State. Specifically, though, I want to address what I believe that you're going to not hear tonight is a plan to remediate students that are found late to have reading issues at the high school level. And I ask for that to be addressed with a very, what you'll see here actually on these slides for tonight, what is our work moving forward? And, you know, one of the pieces is interventions and assessments, and how to help a struggling student who is then identified, again, late, be able to close that gap, the reading gap, the educational gap, and graduate, and move on to a successful life. Because without the skill of reading, that student is at high risk.
Thank you very much. Ron, we're going to want to your superintendent's report.
Okay, so before we go onto the education report, I wanted to share some updates with members of our school community. The presentation this evening, and I'll introduce that momentarily, but the presentation for this evening is on literacy, science of reading specifically, and I'll introduce that momentarily. I do want to call to members of our community's attention that November 1st, so that's a week from Friday, we have a superintendent's conference day, so students will not report, pre-K to 12 will not report, that is our superintendent's conference day, we'll be offering all kinds of professional learning opportunities to members of our staff. Also, I wanted to call to attention the Fall Comedy. If you haven't been to a Fall Comedy, please show up. November 15th, November 16th, Friday and Saturday night, 7:00 PM. It's titled Murders in the Air, H-E-I-R, and I think you'll enjoy this production. Come on out, support our students, we have two casts going this year, and sure to be a great performance, so November 15th and 16th. Also, we have our Fall Athletic season winding down, our JV teams and our modified teams, and I just want to just give a quick shout-out and kudos to the coaches and to the students in our modified program. They have done such a wonderful job, whether it was girls' field hockey, boys' volleyball, or boys and girls cross-country, our students have done just such a remarkable job. It's, I know we had a modified program many, many years ago, but to reinvent the program and to reestablish the program took a ton of work, so my thanks to Mr. Barrett, his assistant, Ms. Baxter, and the coaches, Mrs. Horowitz as the principal, certainly Mr. DiGianero, because the field space that we share and the resources that we share takes a group effort. So it was a great, great first season back for our modified sports program, great success in the program, our students had incredible, not just win-loss records, that's not the only way that we're measuring success, but the relationships, the bonds, the connectedness that students experienced were just unmatched, so absolutely terrific work. Our JV teams conclude this week, and we have varsity sports. I believe the athletic director shared with me today that the winning percentage of all of our varsity teams is about 80%. So just a, from a win-loss perspective, terrific, which means that there will be a lot of postseason play happening on our campuses over the next couple of weeks, so we wish all of our fall student athletes nothing but success. The winter sport registration portal is now open, so parents can go in, or students and families can go in and register their child for winter sports, so please don't procrastinate on that, please do that as soon as possible. And I also just want to take a moment to acknowledge the town of Yorktown for passing a resolution for no left turn outside of the C lot. And so the sign is now present, it's prominent, the town went ahead and passed that resolution prohibiting a left turn, we all recognize that that's not the safest turn that especially a student driver can make, so we want them to take right turns out of the C lot, and my appreciation to the town for their partnership, their willingness to hear our perspective and then to take action on it. So, just a thank you to Supervisor Loachman and all of the town officials for bringing that to fruition. So that concludes the report that I wanted to share with the board and with our community at this time, and I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Amerling, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and she will introduce this evening's presentation on literacy and science of reading specifically.
All right, thank you. Good evening, thank you for your time tonight for a presentation on the science of reading and some of the work that has been happening here at Yorktown over the last almost year and a half intensively. This evening I will be joined by Ms. Pamela Chesser, our Supervisor of Humanities, who has been just incredible at leading much of this work with our teachers. Over the past two years, there has been a lot of media attention given to the science of reading, primarily on the heels of the pandemic and following the publishing of the 2022 national statistics that indicated that less than 35% of 4th graders were not reading proficiently at grade level. Fortunately, that statistic did not and does not represent Yorktown, as we have had a strong reading and intervention program, certainly for as long as I have been here. But the report did cause us to react, respond, and really focus on the science of reading and its impact on teaching and learning. Thank you. Yvette's going to change the slides for me. So, what we know about the science of reading is that it is comprised of research that has been conducted over the last 50 years, all across the world and in multiple languages. This research involves many different fields, not just education. Some fields included are neuroscience, linguistics, cognitive psychology, and developmental psychology. This research collectively has provided evidence to inform how proficient reading develops, why some individuals have difficulty with reading, how to assess, teach, and improve student outcomes through the prevention of and intervention for learning disabilities. This slide lists some of the misconceptions that one may hear in conversations around the science of reading. We know that it is not a reading curriculum to adopt or a program to purchase. There's not a tangible here, there's not a one thing to purchase where I can say, "I'm doing the science of reading." It is not a one-size-fits-all approach. We know that all students learn differently and learn to read differently, so the importance of individual and small-group instruction becomes very important. It is not a phonics program, phonics is merely one part of this work. It is not a new idea, trend, or current fad. Again, it is grounded in thousands of studies and decades of research and evidence. What it really is, is a guide for high-impact practices that are good for all learners. For the next slide, I will now invite Ms. Chesser, who will discuss more about the reading brain and key components of the science of reading, the focus our work.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you all of the great work that our teachers have been engaged in. So, what is the science of reading, actually? What does the research say? And although there are just four bullets here, the science of reading is much bigger than we could probably give you this evening in this short amount of time, but there are some main things that really stand out. So, one of them is that the science of reading used to be thought, or reading used to be thought, just like oral language, that students would develop reading if they were left to their own devices, but that's not true. Unlike oral language, reading has to be explicitly and systematically taught. And so, the science of reading has really taken a look at the brain and to see how much of the brain really lights up when we're learning how to read, and so if you'll indulge me in a very simple example, for example, the word "cat," if a student is going to learn or start to read that word, they first have to identify the word, the letter "C," so that's activating one part of their brain, and then they have to say, "Okay, so what sound does the letter "C" make?" And they're activating a second part of their brain, and they're doing that for every letter in whatever word they're trying to decode, and they're blending those letters together, and so it's kind of popping back and forth in all the parts of their brain. Once they actually have decoded a word, they then have to say, "Okay, so now do I have any meaning for the word 'cat? Do I know what the word 'cat' means?" And so, even in that simple example, you can see how many parts of the brain have to be activated multiple times just to get through one word, let alone a whole sentence or a whole book or a whole story for a student, so it actually is a pretty complex situation. So the way reading is taught matters, because the science of reading shows us what high-impact strategies are, where we'll be most likely to read and read effectively. So, this is another one of the cornerstones of visuals that our teachers have taken a look at, and it is really synonymous with the science of reading, you're going to hear the science of reading, you'll always hear about Scarborough's rope. So, Dr. Scarborough actually started this rope using pipe cleaners, he wanted to really show people that every pipe cleaner represents a different aspect of what has to happen when you read, and so you'll see it's categorized into two parts, one being language comprehension and the other being word recognition. And so what he wanted to show is that when all of those things are twisted together, they get increasingly tighter as we go, and we're trying to move from the left-hand side to the right-hand side, and that right-hand side is the skilled reading, where everything is tightly wound together. This takes place over a very long and extended period of time, so years and years, I mean all the way through when students are in 12th grade and beyond, I'm not sure if we ever get to the end of the rope, to be honest. And that point you'll see further in the next slide. So, the pillars of reading actually have each part of Dr. Scarborough's rope involved, so each one of those pieces from the other slide can actually fit into one of these categories. So I'm going to take you from actually the upper-left-hand corner, that pink part, that's phonemic awareness, that's really where children just learn about sounds. So all of you that have children know how oral language develops, children listen to people speaking, and then they start to emulate that speech. So, that's the beginning part of students learning to read, so you're starting to know, "Okay, I can make words with sounds." Actually being able to manipulate those sounds and isolate those sounds is what we're doing in some of our UPK classes, where students are starting to, I'll go back to my easy example of "cat," they know that "C" makes the "c" sound, if I take the "C" away from "at" and put in "B," now it makes the word "bat." But in phonemic awareness, that's all auditory, nobody's reading anything, and they're not writing anything either. We then move into phonics, which is actually understanding that letters actually represent sound, and so what you'll see, one of the skills we're really trying to work with with students, is that every letter in the alphabet has at least one sound, some multiple, and you'll actually see teachers with letter cards, and they'll put up the letter, and students will make the sound that the letter makes, and that's, those are all the beginning precursors of reading that eventually start to go together where students are decoding whole words at a time. So, we, once they've done that, we really want them to move into fluency, where they're able to fluently read, so it's coming with automaticity, it's coming with accuracy, the really hard part for them is intonation, so if you hear new students, students new to reading, read, they're not always reading with intonation and expression, so what you would actually see a teacher do with that is you'd say, they give them a familiar passage, and the student is reading that same passage over and over for intonation and expression of that passage. None of this can take place without vocabulary, because the higher the reading level, the more vocabulary is introduced to students. You'll see some of the skills that we work on there are suffixes and prefixes. Even our youngest students, our kindergarten students, learn suffixes, they learn that "s" at the end of a noun turns it from a singular into a plural, so they're able to start making meaning just from that one letter at the end. At a higher level, a prefix like "miss," which means incorrect, they, when they come across that word later, so like a misunderstanding, they understand it's an incorrect understanding, so you'll see that constantly. It's not by mistake that comprehension is in the center of all this, because without comprehension, reading comprehension doesn't happen. So, even if I can decode very difficult words, if I can't comprehend them, I can't analyze, I can't infer, then reading comprehension will not take place. So, what does this all mean for our teachers and what we've been working on here in YCSD? So, a lot of the science of reading has informed our work, where we're really taking a look at what does the research say? You'll see Shifting the Balance, which is a book that has really grounded our work, the book talks about a lot of misconceptions, and then takes a look at the research and what the research really says, and I'll give you an example of one. A misconception is that if we give students great literature or great things to read, that they will naturally acquire vocabulary. That's not necessarily true, so that is a misconception. A higher-impact practice for that would be showing students that we can categorize words. So, for example, in fiction, one of the words that always changes, if I made a category of, let's say, communication, we don't say over and over, "He said, he said, he said." There's going to be a lot of words that take the place of that. "He replied, he exclaimed, he suggested," so you're going to get many different words that mean that, and students start to see the code of how authors write, that that's going to be a communication word. I might not know what that word means, but it is a communication word, and so then students can start looking at context to figure that out. So that would just be a small example. We are always trying to build background knowledge for students, and so background knowledge does not just mean, if I'm going to be reading about the Dust Bowl, I give you some background information about the Dust Bowl, it means I'm trying to make your learning purposeful. So I do that through the use of essential questions that tie why I'm reading things together, and I'm really trying to have students have more experience with an idea. So for example, one of our, one of our 4th grade essential questions is, what motivates people to do what they do? And so while they're reading, throughout their reading that whole year, that's building their knowledge, their background knowledge about why people are motivated to do certain things. All of our instructional practices, we're taking a look at, so, you know, even taking a look at our workshop model, our small-group instruction, how do we look at word study and morphology, and so what that might look like in a classroom is a teacher is taking a look at giving a mini lesson, but then having students who have different needs having small-group instruction. So how do we know all of what students need? We look at our data, and so we start looking at the data so that we can inform instruction and make sure that all students have what they need in order to be successful in all five pillars of the reading.
We have also looked at aligning our interventions. This work has involved all of our classroom teachers and reading specialists. We have examined our Tier One interventions, those are the interventions that take place within the classroom, and supported teachers, as Ms. Chesser said, in looking at a variety of data, data from our benchmark assessments, from their own assessments, formative and summative. Teachers are able to evaluate student needs and provide individual or small-group instruction to target those needs. We have provided professional development and support around a variety of programs that include foundations, Hegarty, and Lexia. These are all evidence-based programs supported by the science of reading that teachers are currently using in the classroom. We have also evaluated the interventions that take place outside of the classroom, these are Tier Two and our Tier Three interventions that happen in addition to the Tier One supports that students have inside of the classroom. We've utilized our MTSS process in looking at data to target specific deficits with an evidence-based program for remediation for students that have a greater level of need. Some interventions used to support our Tier Two and Three programs include Great Leaps for Fluency, 95% Group, which is influenced by Orton Gillingham and involves a multisensory approach to reading, LLI, or Level Deliteracy Intervention for students in upper elementary for comprehension, to name just a few. We have really refined our MTSS process and use of data at the elementary level, and I just want to mention the work of our MTSS coordinator, Ms. Stephanie Conroy, as she has been instrumental in moving this work forward. Through her work and in coordination with Ms. Chesser, we ensure that all students are assessed throughout the year, students that need additional support are identified and provided with targeted instruction to support their specific needs. We have worked to ensure there is progress monitoring to ensure the program's effectiveness for the students and determine if any additional interventions are needed. Our work moving forward is to continue to grow understanding and knowledge in the science of reading at all levels. Learning to read proficiently is a long and complex process, and our professional development and commitment to this work needs to match that complexity. We will continue to strengthen the work at the K5 level that has begun, and now begin to support the secondary levels in their work as reading becomes much more complex. We will continue to evaluate the effectiveness of programs that we have and identify any additional areas of need. With this, we will continue to support the knowledge and growth of our reading specialists and interventionists, especially in their Tier Two and Three work. We will continue to work towards the alignment of this great body of research for all students. There is work to be done for all learners, those on level, below level, above level, English language learners, et cetera. We remain committed to success for every student. This is very much a work in progress, it's a journey at many different levels, but it's incredibly interesting and exciting. I'm so thankful to Ms. Chesser for what she has done to lead this work. I'm thankful to all the classroom teachers and reading specialists for their professionalism and commitment to understanding and refining their craft, and I'm thankful to our building administrators for supporting this work, participating in much of the professional development, and for creating the time for teachers both in and outside the classroom. Again, it is really exciting work, we look forward to developing it further for the benefit of all students. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, we're here.
Thank you, this is exciting work. Mike, did you have any questions?
No, I don't think I have any questions, you know, fascinating information for me. I've been an avid reader since I was a child and never put this much thought into why, but it makes a lot of sense, so thank you.
Rashmi?
I have a question. Sorry, I'll just clean my neck. So, does this work bolster what we have already in the elementary buildings, or is it, or are we just focusing, using the science to focus on different parts of the reading, like maybe more phonics in the younger grades and then the fluency and comprehension in the upper grades, or how does this tie into the work that, or the programs that we have had?
So it does work very nicely with a lot of the things that we already have. As I mentioned, we already have things like essential questions to build background knowledge. It does bring a little bit more to the forefront, what are the high-impact strategies that the research suggests, and so it allows us to infuse those into some of the places where we may not have had all of them. But we did have many things in place, so as Ms. Amerling mentioned, we did already have foundations and Hegarty, there are pieces that we already have in place, but we're committed to taking a look at everything we have to see where we can continue to hone that.
Great, thank you.
No questions, just a thank you, because you always are looking to go further, you know, we have a great program, but you're looking to take it further, and your dedication to our district is very much appreciated.
Kedley?
Hi, have you seen an increase in reading proficiency within like the Tier One students or Tier Two, or within like state testing or at Stars, now that you added like PEF or Hegarty?
Yeah, I can say that with the MTSS work, and it's very specific, it's very targeted, as you know, that we have seen students that once we gave them what they really need and monitored that over time, we have seen many students last year that began a program that and monitored that over time, we have seen many students last year that began a program, that it was implemented with fidelity, it was progress monitored, and that they exited. It doesn't mean that those students might need something else, but for what they presented as their initial and most primary deficit, we have seen great work in them exiting because we were able to remediate that area. So, that work, the MTSS, is also fascinating. I would at some point like to come back to give another presentation on that, because it really does dovetail with this SOR work so well. So, I would like to come back and kind of give an update, and even at that point, bring some data in to really show the efficacy of the programs and how they're working for our students.
Thank you. So, when you use the science of reading in a K5 program, there are set-aside blocks for teaching, you know, English. What happens, how does this look, science of reading look as you move it from, you know, to, from 6 to 12? How does that kind of blend into the work?
So, you're correct. It is going to look a little bit different in the upper grades, especially since they have less time for ELA. But as we're starting that work right now, there are things that we know we can start to take a look at, such as balancing the whole class novel with book clubs, where we're, students are able to get the different parts that they may need, looking at workshop model even at the high school and middle school level. So, what does that actually look like at a high school and middle school level? So, those are all pieces that we are embarking on almost at the end of this month of starting to work with a consultant to help us with those things. And our teachers are very excited at the high school level in the special ed and in our English department of just looking at some different ways to start thinking about their teaching and thinking about practice.
I think it's so great that it's a K-12 philosophy, not just, it just doesn't end at 5. I think that's fantastic. So, thank you for all this hard work. It's very appreciated. Did you want to add anything, Ron?
No, just two quick items. There are other supports and resources that we can look at at the secondary level, where we can incorporate the work or leverage the work, whether it's an English skills class or some of the other courses that we offer that are designed to specifically work on skills. So, that's one piece. The other piece is, I liked Ms. Emeralding's suggestion of giving you a follow-up, giving the board a follow-up presentation on our data dashboard. We presented that last year with very limited input with regard to student data input. So, there was very limited data input into the system at that point. When we presented, it was just getting off the ground. But like we've done with a couple of other programs over the, over this year, whether it's a follow-up from last year's high school presentation on student connectedness, whether it's a follow-up presentation that we're giving now on science of reading, which we had previously presented, and now maybe a follow-up on the data dashboard and the MTSS work would be appropriate just to give the board that follow-up piece. One year later, what is the progress that we've made in this area? I think that there would be some value in giving a follow-up presentation.
I think it would be fantastic. Thank you so much. Okay. So, we are going to move on to board reports. Audit, Rashmi?
No new updates since the last BO meeting.
Okay. Educational vision, Catalina?
We met, and Dr. Hatta gave us an update. He met with Mr. DeGennaro and Mrs. Chaconi about the grading process. And once we went to the policy meeting, we saw that there was more talk that we, that had to go through. So, Dr. Hatta's going to meet with them again and then follow up with us. We also discussed future agenda items and how we were going to collaborate.
Great, thank you. Facilities, okay. We met on October 8th. We were talking about more of the design and the multipurpose field and baseball field that are going up to SED this month. We know we have to, we're going to have to replace two 50-inch pipes that are running under the new turf, where the new turf field is going to be. So, we're still waiting on a cost of that. We brought in the athletic director, a coach, PE representatives, all to meet with us to help us review the plans and see any concerns they had with them. They talked about a couple of pinch points in the walkways, and we addressed ways to address those, and we're going to come back and look at that. The ADA asked us, Rob asked us about making more, a more expanded area for the brick paper donations, because apparently they're starting to run out of room for that, so maybe we could incorporate that into it. The concession stand is still in progress. It's going to go up to SED separately, so we're just worried about getting the fields up there because of the timing issue and the levels of approvals that we have to get. It's not just SED, we need DEC, we may need Army Corps. We don't know the levels quite yet. The other thing is, Ron talked with the town about accessing the sewer line and maybe scoping it and just getting an idea of what the condition is, and they, hopefully will do that by mid-November, so thank you for doing that. And we will be meeting again tomorrow. So, that's that. Fiscal, Mike?
Fiscal's last meeting was September 30th. We discussed the implications of reducing our routes, bus routes on our contract, our transportation contract, and we also reviewed some ideas regarding our health insurance, specifically the working spouse rule and the family buyout portion. We need to get some more information from our transportation provider in order to be able to understand the impact of route reductions and where we can benefit. And we're also looking at considering a questionnaire, going out to our staff regarding health insurance topics. And we made a suggestion to perhaps identify and work with a consultant to help address some of those insurance issues. Next meeting will be coming up, most likely early November, as we start to begin the budget process.
Thank you. Policy, Lisa, can you report?
Sure, I'll fill in for Cheryl. Our last meeting was October 10th. We reviewed 10 policies, mostly centering around student transportation and grading systems. We don't have any policies to submit to the board tonight for a first read, because we had a lot of questions, and these policies were very involved, so we were soliciting additional information. And we'll meet again on November 7th, and hopefully we'll have some policies then.
Thank you. We're going to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of, hang on, the October 7th meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for September 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Can I have a motion to approve the claims order report for September 24?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And a motion to approve the extra classroom reports for September 24?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Personnel upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have certified personnel, part-time appointments, other compensation, we have extra duty, unpaid leave of absences, additions to substitute list. Under classified personnel, we have civil service appointments, additions to the substitute list, and some unpaid leaves of absence.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Can I have a motion to approve the graduate credits that are listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Business office, a motion to approve the 2526 budget development calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Facility users groups, whereas on August 26, 2024, the Board of Education in Yorktown Central School District approved facility users groups in accordance with Board Policy 1500 for the 2425 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves adding the following entities to the Board-approved school-related organizations for the purposes of Board Policy 1500. New York State Public High School Athletic Association, Section 1, NISMA, and the Westchester Officials Association.
So moved.
Discussion?
Sure.
Yeah, can we just talk about why we're doing this?
Absolutely, and I appreciate you raising that question. So, when we created our list of facility users, we recognized that there were some third-party entities in addition to our PTAs and some of the outside groups that raised money for our school districts, there were some additional entities that we had very close relationships with. So, for example, Section 1, as we host some Section Championship Games on our campuses, those are not Yorktown Central School District events. Those technically are Section 1 events, and according to the revised Board policy, without identifying Section 1 as either a school-related organization or another community-based organization, we would not be able to host Section 1 games on our campuses. So, this now recognizes these related groups, whether it's the Officials Association, NISMA, Section 1, or the New York State Public High Schools Athletic Association. It recognizes them to be able to use our facilities so that we may host events on our campuses under their direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Curriculum. A motion to approve the following Yorktown Congress of Teachers Professional Improvement Proposals for the 2425 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Special ed, a motion to arrange the following placements as of October 21, 2024?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. A motion to approve the instructional services agreements between the Yorktown Central School District as the sending school districts and the following school districts as the receiving school districts for the students from the Yorktown Central School District to attend special education programs in the receiving schools for the 2425 school year. This is for the Center for Discovery, the Greenberg-Graham Union Free School District, the Greenberg-Newcastle Union Free School District, and the North Salem Central School District.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Stipulation of settlement, be it resolved that the board hereby approves a settlement agreement dated October 21, 2024, in the matter of student number 5395, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools shall be authorized to sign the settlement agreement on the district's behalf.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Gift grants and donations, a motion to approve with gratitude the following gift grants and donations. At Brookside, $7 from the Brookside PTA for a school field trip. At Yorktown High School, $2,000 from the Yorktown High School PTSA for Senior Day guest speaker, Matt Bellas. Catering from the Yorktown High School Science Research Parent Foundation for the Senior Writing Day Practice Nights and the Science Research Symposium to take place in May of '25. And for the Yorktown High School Wellness Day, $25 gift card from Little Sorrento's, $250 gift cards from the Yorktown Coach Diner, $3, $5 gift cards from Trailside Cafe, a $30 gift card from Harami Restaurant, $2, $25 gift cards from the Yorktown Pizza and Piazza, three gift cards, one, each for one large pizza from Maria's Pizza, and $5, $25 gift cards from Okinawa Restaurant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. We're up to board comments. Mike?
I'm good.
You're good. Rashmi?
I'm good, thanks.
Lisa?
I just want to thank our community for all those gift cards. It's so nice to see that list. Everyone came together and chipped in, and it's a nice little thing for our Wellness Day.
Catalina?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, I am good too. Ron? Hitra? Public comment? Nobody? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Good night, everyone. Okay.